I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, May 18, 2020. Please rise for the place of the class. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To this big mission we take, and we are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens, even in these dislocating times. By the way, just want to make one announcement to Board of Ed members. We have sixteen applicants for our student representatives. And so hand in, look them, look all of the applications over, hand, hand them in. If we don't get them all in, Maeve just has to stay another year, and she doesn't want to do that. Needs to go to Penn State. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda? I have a motion, do I have, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor, I say yea, everyone needs to put their vote in on the chat. And Donna, you want to tell us when you think you have everybody? Everybody needs to vote. We have people, okay. Thank you. Questions and or comments from interested citizens, Donna, do we have anybody? No. Do we have any updates, Elsie, on questions?
We don't, we haven't had any comments in a while.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation by Matt Kravitz, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, on general personnel considerations, Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so welcome, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2020-21 budget for general personnel considerations from my son's bedroom. Before I begin, I'd like to thank members of the Business Office and Payroll Department, who provided assistance with all the numbers being presented tonight, so thank you in advance to all of them. Tonight, I'm going to be focusing on two areas of the overall budget, salaries and benefits. So one of the things I just want you to understand is that there's really an ebb and flow to budgeting for personnel. For example, we budget contractual increases, but we don't always have contracts in place. In a given year, we may have a large number of teachers, for example, increase a step on the salary scale. Or we may have a need for a large number of substitutes in one particular year, depending on overall employee health and district initiatives. So for example, if we have a large professional development push or something that we're moving towards, we may need to budget for more substitutes for that particular year for those reasons. But it's also important to note that each year we have employees retire. And if they're replaced, it's done for a reduced salary. And I'll be referring to this a number of times during this presentation, a term called breakage. And basically what that means is that somebody who often has spent their entire career with us for years and years impacting our children in our district, they've decided to go and, you know, start the next phase of their lives. When they do that, they're typically at a very high level in terms of the salary scale. When they leave and they're replaced, we will not be replacing them at the same level that they that they were leaving. So as a result, every time that happens, we budget for the breakage amount in between the higher salary and the new, the newer employee salary. When somebody retires, I also just want to make sure that everybody understands, we make it a priority to review every single position. So if somebody's leaving, we sit down as a team and we have a conversation and we determine what positions need to be kept and if, what positions, if any, can be reallocated or absorbed throughout the budget. And for example, well, all the while maintaining program and instruction, because that's obviously our number one goal. For example, this year, we have a large number of, or a number of teaching assistants who are retiring. As we look at a change in some programs from building to building, and just the ever-changing needs, we've made a decision as a, as a team that four of those positions can be absorbed within the confines of this budget. So we won't have to replace those four positions, and that's something called attrition. And what it allows us to do is to basically maximize all of our staff and and utilize them throughout the, in all different programs. All right, so let's talk about salaries. So these are the overall salaries for the entire school district. Last year, you could see last year's amount, and then this current year's, which is a two and a quarter percent increase, largely dependent upon contractual applications. For those who don't know, for those who are all watching this on YouTube, we have four contracts or four negotiating bargaining units in our, in our district. We have the NWTA, and that's our teachers and teaching assistants. We have the NWEA, which is primarily our clerical staff, our safety staff, and our food services. And then we have our MWAA, which is our administrative team, district principals, assistant principals and directors. And then our CSEA, primarily made up of our school bus drivers and our buildings and grounds department. We also have a fifth group, who is not represented in a bargaining unit, and those are called our non-bargaining members, typically our central office and some staff members who are deemed confidential. I mentioned retirements earlier, so I just want to give you a, just an understanding. This year, we have twenty-three teachers, twenty-three people who for a lot of years have made a difference in this district, and they've decided it's time to go and move on through retirement. With that, we're determined to fill those positions as best we can. And what we're going to be doing, though, is all those people retired, or will be retiring at a very high step. And as I said earlier, through the use of breakage, or breakage is the result, when we hire somebody, we're going to be hiring them at a lower step, so there is a budgetary amount that we gain there. So I'm going to focus on three groups, buildings and grounds, transportation, and the instructional piece. And the reason for that is these three groups make up the largest amount of the overall salary and benefits budget. So our custodians and our maintenance, our buildings and grounds, the people, the men and women who get up in the morning to make sure the doors are open as kids are being dropped off for early morning care or for classes, the people who stay late when a pipe breaks or something goes wrong, the group of people who are, you know, at the front line right now, making sure that as people come into buildings, that as soon as they leave, everything's wiped down and cleaned up. So that's our buildings and grounds and maintenance group. You'll see a slight decrease, and the reason for that is what we've done is as we've continued to fine-tune all of our budgets. This is in part because of the need for less substitutes next year, continuing grasp on overtime, and also our continued use of something, you know, things such as team cleaning, where when we approach an entire building, you may not have one person doing, you know, all ten jobs. It just might not be as efficient. So when you break it up and attack the entire building as a team in terms of cleaning, we may not need as much support, so that number is indicative of that. Transportation, this is the, the group of people who, on those cold mornings when we're not sure if it's going to be a snow day or not, and it turns out to not be, and everyone comes to work and they're nervous and they're white-knuckling and, you know, the steering wheel, and our staff comes to, hops in the big bus and they say, yep, we'll get your kids to school safely. That's what we're talking about when we talk about the transportation department. You'll also notice that this year, their budgeted amount for the salary was just over $6.8 million, which is a decrease from, from last year. And the reason for that is, again, a continuing focus on positions. And that doesn't mean cuts or, or anything like that, or people who are currently employed not having jobs. What it means is when we have positions, for example, we may have full-time positions and part-time positions. Often, a part-time, a part-timer moves up to become a full-timer, and that's great, because that's what we want. We trust them, we know them, they've been at it for a while, and they've gone up to become a full-timer. Well, at times in years past, that part-time position may remain in the budget, but we may not need it anymore, because now we've got a full-time position. And so what that, that number is indicative of the need for less substitutes, and some of those positions that we have people currently in, and we don't need the, the other position as a result. Instructional is our largest code, it accounts for about eighty percent of our total salary budget. And the 2.67 again is primarily reflective of contractual obligations this year, this coming year. And again, this is everybody who's involved with, working with our kids, those teachers in their classrooms or on computers now, our teaching assistants, our administrators, anyone within the building providing support to our, our children. So that's the number that we have going forward. That's it for salaries. The next, I just want to briefly cover our, our employee fringe benefits. So when we think of benefits, I think most people think of health insurance, and only health insurance. However, there's a lot more that goes into a district's benefit, a package or, or numbers. In fact, health insurance is just slightly more than half of all of our fringe benefits, because it's not just the health insurance, it's the district's contribution to the teacher retirement system, the employee retirement system, our share of payroll taxes through social security and Medicare, workers' compensation insurance, and then, like I said, our health insurance is dental vision and other things. What, I'll talk a little bit more about health insurance in depth in the next slide. But one thing, just to, I just want to point out that even though this is an overall decrease, and I'll explain why, it's best to my ability on the, on the next slide, there are certain areas or certain budget lines that would be increasing. One of those is unemployment, and, you know, just because we don't know what this year and next year is going to continue to look like, so we just want to make sure that that number is boosted. We hope we don't even need it. I mean, but it is budgeted for, so for example, and you may not know this, when somebody, when employee, you know, files for unemployment with the state, we have to meet, we have to basically match that amount dollar for dollar. So as the employer, if somebody gets a certain amount of money from the state, that's the amount that we have to, we have to pay out. So just as, as, I wanted people to understand what that means. Health insurance, so health insurance is not just the premium amount, and because the premium amount always tends to go up. What this is, you'll notice there are a number of things in play here. First of all, and as you know, you know, Patrick has been with us for a number of years, his role in, in, on the health insurance board and his role, obviously, you know, helping us with this throughout the school district is immeasurable. So there have been cost-saving measures that have been in place now for a couple of years that have continued to pay, continue to pay dividends in terms of slow cost increases. One other thing we did this year is we had a number of positions, salaried employees, who are still going to be salaried employees. But what we're able to do is through some of our federal grants, some of our title grants, we're able to move parts of their salaries underneath the federal grant. So you won't see it in the general, you won't see it reflected in the general fund. What we've done now, I believe for the second year in a row, is we've also been able to move their full benefit package into the federal grant as well. So you, what it does is it lowers our general fund, fund amount in terms of health insurance, which is one of the reasons why this number is reflected the way it is as far as a negative. Because we've been able now to take their benefit amount and say, all right, we still have to pay it, but it's going to be paid out through this, this federal fund, which is a good thing for our general fund. So this is the total. You know, we cover about seventy-eight percent of our, our budget is salaries and benefits. Mrs. Rodriguez is going to be presenting in just a few minutes about the overall budget. And not that you don't want to hear me, but I'm sure you're more excited to, to hear from her. But just a reminder, as we, you know, kind of come to our conclusion of this one, you know, we say it every year, education is a people business. It's the people we see in the cafeterias, around the fields, those who are, you know, giving food out to all we need, those who say hi to us as soon as we come in the building, those who teach us, and those who keep us safe. So that's who we're talking about when we talk about the overall personnel budget considerations. Any questions?
No questions? All right, thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
No problem.
Elsie Rodriguez, Superintendent of Schools. Then her 2020, 2021 budget recommendation.
Yes, I just need Mr. Kravitz to get out of his presentation to let me present.
Mr. Kravitz is looking stoic, I think he's frozen.
Let me see if I can, it doesn't allow me to.
Sorry about that, I apologize, I didn't know if you needed me. I lost you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to present the 2020-2021 school budget and to the department chairs, building principals, directors, and assistant superintendents for their input into developing a budget that maintains programs and is fiscally responsible to our taxpayer. This slide represents the most important stakeholders, our students. We are a district that serves five towns, sixty-five hundred students, and thirty-seven thousand residents. We are a diverse community that is a microcosm of our country. We received an A rating by Nish.com for our academics, club activities, and teachers, and were rated four in the state for athletics. We are the first high school in the state to offer teaching as a profession through SUNY Albany. This year, fifty senior athletes will continue to participate in athletics at the collegiate level when they move on to college. Our school report card for the 2018-2019 school year that was just released highlights our graduation rate at ninety-four percent. For the first time, we had an elementary student earn the National PTA Reflections Award in literature. MW is the reason that Special Olympics takes place in Orange County. We were the first district in Orange County to participate in the Special Olympics held at West Point. We were the first district to sign on for the Section Nine Unified Basketball Team. We were the first district to establish a varsity bowling team in Orange County. For the ninth year in a row, we are named Best Community for Music Education. As we continue to expand college offerings, our current ninth-grade students have the opportunity to graduate with fifty-seven AP credits and forty-one college credits. Lastly, this year, Monroe Woodbury High School was designated by the New York State Education Department as a recognition school for its high achieving and high progress for the 2019-2020 school year. This year's designee represent thirteen percent of New York State public schools. I talk about our guiding principles. School systems are complex, are complex, and guided by state law, school law, federal law, and also at the local level. District policy developed by the BOE in collaboration with various stakeholders is the single most important responsibility of the Board of Education. It helps define culture of the district and identifies our priorities and our values. Our district mission statement, which reads, Monroe Woodbury Central School District is committed to an academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, the district's mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare students to become responsible global citizens. This slide represents our budget development calendar that began in early January and was modified multiple times to address the changing development of this pandemic. Tomorrow, the Board of Education will vote to adopt this budget presented this evening. The public hearing is scheduled for May 27th. District residents wishing to speak can contact the district clerk, Donna Vitucci, or fill out a form online under the Board of Education tab. Finally, this year's vote will take place via absentee ballots on June 9th. We began to develop this budget post our cyber event in September of 2019 and pre-COVID-19, March 2020. Ironically, the beginning of this year forced us to go back to paper and pen to the end of the year with online instruction, all within six months. So these are the implications, and these are the things that we've had to address. Technology, there's been an increased use of technology and the purchase of devices to facilitate student-teacher engagement. Our budget vote, the annual school budget vote originally scheduled for May 19th, has been rescheduled to be held Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, by absentee ballot via mail. School closure, school buildings remain closed through the end of the school year. This has greatly impacted our students, families, and teachers, and our end-of-year events. Our New York State enacted a reduced budget. Our budget from January has been reduced by $3.5 million. And finally, the governor will reevaluate state aid for schools quarterly. During this unprecedented time, we need to continue to focus on what is best for our students. Preserve all instruction, instructional programs, while being fiscally responsible to our residents during this difficult economic time. We utilize four strategies to be able to accomplish this. Sorry, hold on one second. I'm sorry, let me go back, because I can only see this. So I'm looking at the, at the slide that reads our budget priorities. So our budget priorities were maintain our instructional programs, refine our online experience for students, teachers, parents, and administrative team, and finally, develop a school reopening plan that we plan to do with our, our task force that includes parents, teachers, administrators, local officials, and members of the Orange County Health Department to develop a plan for reopening school. Now, let's go to nine. We used four strategies to balance our budget, reduce appropriations. We reduced the 2020-2021 budget from an initial rollover budget increase of approximately three percent to 1.5%. Budgetary belt tightening occurred district-wide with cuts to staffing levels, conferences, and meeting, equipment consultants, and the material and supplies of budget codes. We utilized savings during this closure. We applied savings occurring during school closure to next year's budget by increasing the use of unassigned fund balance from 1.9 million to 3.8 million. We increased the use of reserve funds. We appropriated 1.4 million from reserves and debt service fund to preserve academic programs and staff, and lower the levy from 2.07% to 1.5%. Lastly, we're going to monitor and intervene in the 2020-2021 budget. Should the mid-year state aid cuts occur, the district will make financial and operational adjustments as needed. They may include spending freezes and no backfills of staff retirements and resignation. And now I will turn this over to Patrick, who will speak to Slide 10 and discuss in detail our state aid.
Thank you, Elsie. So typically, when we're discussing state aid, this time of year, even a little earlier maybe in the process, we're, we're talking about the negotiation process between the governor and the legislature, and we're talking about how much or how large is our increase in state aid. So in our case, we went from the governor's proposal in January, an increase of about $1.3 million in state aid, like budget to budget, to a foundation aid freeze by the time the budget was finally adopted in March 31st, with a pandemic adjustment cut in aid, and then a federal restoration. So it's been a roller coaster ride, really. And subsequent to the adoption of the state budget, the governor, during one of his press conferences, alluded to additional cuts in state aid, which is something we were all concerned about, as the fiscal state of the, of the state, so to speak, deteriorated, and, and the nation for that matter. The, the governor alluded to a cut in state aid up to twenty percent. So that was really an eye-opener and would be a devastating cut to most school districts. We weren't sure about that, if that was a real number, or if it was, as some have opined, a political ploy to use leverage or exert leverage on the federal government to provide more additional money to the state and localities. But in any case, eventually, the governor also has talked about these quarterly assessments that, that Elsie mentioned, whereby the state would, and I, I'm air quoting when I say quarterly, they're not actually quarters. It was, the first assessment period was the month of April, and then from May to the end of June, and then from July to the end of December, end of the year. But what the governor had said about these assessment periods is that the state would assess its own receipts and expenditures, and if those receipts, the revenues, or their expenses related to, you know, COVID-19 crisis, etc., either, in the case of revenue, was less than, one percent less than what they projected, or the expenses were one percent more, the state was reserving the right to make adjustments to state aid and presumably other things as well. So, so here we have these assessment periods out there. We have the governor alluding to a twenty percent cut in state aid, which would, as I mentioned, would just really be off the charts devastating to, to most school districts, including our own. And what we had heard from the Division of Budget is that they would have the first assessment period figured out, so to speak, and the results mid-May. So, so we had heard the date of May 15th, which was Friday. So that's one of the reasons we've sort of pushed off making final decisions on the budget. We were hopeful we'd have some, some hard numbers, some final numbers on the state aid run. So Friday came and went. Nothing happened, we didn't get any information from the state. So needless to say, there's a great deal of uncertainty right now with our budget and every budget in New York State, every school budget that is. What we finally agreed upon was a cut to state aid. Again, it's, it's, it's difficult with this uncertainty, it's less than twenty percent. We, we didn't, we, we sort of thought about that, and we figured that talking about, or even going down that road of a twenty percent cut would be so difficult to absorb without a significant impact to the district, that it didn't really make sense to even go down that road without, without more information from the state. So again, factoring in a cut to state aid is approximately six percent, was the reduction number that we finally sort of settled on. And, and we're operating really in the dark here. The, the governor had mentioned twenty percent, but he didn't talk about what specific aid programs would be impacted. The, the one thing he did do was freeze foundation aid, which was about a $574,000 cut to us. And, and again, like I said, from that January aid run to the adoption of the budget, it was a, a, a change of, of about 1.2 million. And, and now with our figuring in an additional state aid cut, the, the swing from, from January to our budget is more like three and a half million dollar reduction. So it's really significant, really tough year for school districts. If you look at the chart that we're presenting right now, we're budgeting a reduction in nearly every aid category, I think, except for transportation aid. The overall decrease is 2.28 million, or about four, a little over four and a quarter percent. So while we normally need and expect an increase in state aid this time of year, for next year, we're planning on a reduction in state aid. Hopefully, it won't be any worse than our projection of approximately six percent. If it is, we'll have to, you know, pivot and make some adjustments to our discretionary spending for next year to account for that. If it's better, in other words, if it's, if it's less than six percent, we wouldn't need as much assigned fund balance. So again, the news is not great, a lot of uncertainty, but we are, you know, we're, we're moving forward, as most districts are, most districts have to at this point. And just keeping our fingers crossed that the, the ultimate, if there is a cut in state aid, that it will be either less or far less, or there won't be any sort of aid cut from what we projected in the budget.
Patrick, do you want to just speak a little bit about the high tax aid? That sort of came out of the left, out of left field.
Yeah, that, that's a, an aid category that not every district receives. And, and so we, we do receive that, the, the high tax aid, it's, that number has been frozen for years, it's usually about 1.6 million. And so, you know, what we did again with, with, without having really hard numbers about what, what, you know, the cut, the supposed cut, the possible cut would be. about what, you know, the cut, the supposed cut, the possible cut would be, we reduced that category by about 6%. Foundation aid, it was frozen, and then we reduced it further, again, based on the possibility. It seems like the likelihood that the state will need to pull back even further on school districts.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we debated whether we were going to show this slide. We went back and forth because one of the things we want to make sure is that we don't confuse the taxpayers of the residents. So this slide illustrates the process for determining a school district's maximum allowable levy. We began this process in January, and it has evolved as the global pandemic has evolved. And although the maximum allowable levy is 2.07, we felt it was responsible and prudent to lower the tax levy for our residents from 2.07 to 1.51. Our community has always been very supportive of our school budget, and we felt it was the right thing to do during this really difficult time. So again, our allowable, our maximum allowable levy, and I think when Mr. Cahill first did his presentation, I think that's the number that he talked about. He wrote, he discussed 2.07, you know, using that, our maximum allowable levy. But as time has gone on, we feel that it's really prudent to do whatever we can as a school district to lower that for our taxpayers. So this is just a budget comparison. This year, our budget is, we're proposing a budget of $183,999,908, and that's an increase of 1.50. And that is, in comparison to last year, our budget-to-budget increase was 2.65. This year is 1.50. Our tax levy is, our proposed tax levy is $124,735. That is an increase from last year to, from this year to next year of 1.51. But in the previous year, our tax levy was 2.57. And then is our budget, is our budget, sorry, our budget recommendation. Proposition number one is our total general fund budget, which is $183,999,908. And then proposition number two is our bus and vehicle purchase, which is a replacement of six buses and three vans for a total cost of $1.9,900. So again, we have a proposition one this year and a proposition two, which we generally have. And now I'm going to turn it over to Patrick to talk about the contingency budget.
Thanks, Elsie. So we normally kind of go over this fairly quickly. There is some concern in the school finance community, I think generally, for those that are with schools and in communities, that during these difficult times with the absentee ballot voting process, a budget may be more likely to be defeated. I hope this isn't the case, but it may warrant spending a few minutes on what happens when a budget is voted down with a school district, in a school district, school district budget.
So Patrick, can I just jump in to say one thing? Just a reminder that typically, we have less than 4,000 people vote on the budget, and this year, we are mailing 24,000 ballots, just to give a comparison. Sorry, Patrick.
That's okay. So yeah, so typically, when a voted, when a voted, when a budget is voted down twice, and the votes are usually mid-May and then mid-June, the board or the district would adopt a contingent budget. And so a contingent budget is like a budget of just essential items. The essential educational program, health and safety items, that sort of thing. And there's certain mandatory cuts that need to be made. What's interesting or unusual about this year is the vote date is June 9, and the scheduled revote date was June 16. And as far as I know, there's no provision for a second vote date. So obviously, a vote on the 9th and the 16th via absentee ballot would be impossible. So there will either be no second opportunity on a budget, the school budget, or it'll be late June, maybe early July.
Which is highly unlikely.
Yeah, so.
Fiscal year, July 1, without having a budget approved.
So strange and uncertain times, right? Again, here we are. So I mentioned the contingent budget is really supposed to be essential items, and there's certain mandatory cuts that need to be made. So all non-represented employees, Matt had alluded to the four collective bargaining units that we have. So anybody that's not part of one of those, ordinary staff member, management confidential, sometimes they're called, would be not entitled to a raise. You'd eliminate those raises. Equipment that's not health and safety-related would be eliminated from the budget. There would be limited or no community use of facilities, and that is a big deal with our district. Mostly when there's, if there's no, if there's a cost involved. And there is a bit of a cost. We do charge for facilities use, but it's not always fully covering the expense to the district. But the most significant rule or change about the contingent budget is the no increase in the levy from the current year. So what that would mean for us, and I'm showing that on the slide, is that we'd have to have the same levy, which would require either through a combination of budget cuts or use of fund balance or use of additional reserves to make up about $1.857 million. So that would be a very, very difficult thing to do, a very bitter pill for us to swallow. It's always a tough situation when a school district has to adopt a contingent budget. For us, you know, the third bullet I have, I talk about the reductions that would likely have to occur in staff, you know, how it would impact program, and, you know, instructional changes district-wide. It really would be a problem. And it's one of those things where you don't want to be alarmist, but based on all the uncertainty this year and the change to the voting process, we're a little concerned, obviously, more than a little. The other piece, there's a final piece to a contingent budget that I didn't mention, has to do with the administrative percentage of the budget. So in our case, it's about 10% of the budget is made up of an administrative category. And we have to, based on New York State law, categorize the budget into three major categories, administrative, program, and capital. So one of the restrictions is that the, whatever that administrative percentage is of the budget for the current year, it can't be more than that in the next year. And so, for instance, if it's 10% this year, and we go through our ordinary budget process and we say it's 10.25% next year, if we didn't pass the budget and had to adopt a contingent budget, we'd have to make cuts in the administrative area to get back to 10%. And that can be difficult because there's not a lot of room to maneuver sometimes in that category. So that's really the explanation of the contingent budget. You know, it's, hopefully, it won't be an issue for us, but it's a pretty significant, significant event, as I mentioned, when a district does have to do this.
Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you.
You're welcome. As you can tell, I'm a little frazzled. I think it's a really tough year. It's been unprecedented, and it's been uncertain. But here's the one takeaway that I think is really important for the community to know. We have always been fiscally prudent, and Patrick has always done a really great job making sure that we are financially stable and we are in a good place. So, you know, it's very, we're very fortunate to be in this place as we move forward on these, you know, during these uncertain times.
Thank you. Yes. In agreement. All right, next item. Do we have a motion to accept a resolution establishing June 9, 2020? At 5:00 PM is the new date and time of the annual budget vote and election. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, I say aye. We fine, Donna? Yes? All right. The resolution has passed. Do we have a motion to appoint John Hubert as chairperson and Dan Ezrodi as alternate of the June 9, 2020 budget vote and election? Do I have a motion? We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, aye. I say aye. Donna? Yes? Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the election inspectors for the June 9, 2020 budget vote and election? I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye, aye. We are. We are fine on that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2020 regular meeting? Right. Motion, all those in favor, aye. We are set. The second reading of the policy manual update. Do you want to start this, Chris, and then Bogoff can explain one thing?
Oh, yes, we had the lawyers review one of the policies. I think it's 8270. I don't have the paper in front of me. Is that right?
86. 16.
And they, they noted that our original policy is more comprehensive than the first, than the one we were changing it to. So they alluded to us leaving the original one. If Bogoff wants to just speak momentarily about it, he had more information going forward.
So, thank you, Chris. So the existing 8270 has a much more comprehensive policy. That is basically our acceptable use policy. So there is no need for us to go and then revise that policy. So the second reading, we end up eliminating the policy 8630.
8630, that was it.
Anything else, Chris? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of those policies? 8625, 8635, we have a motion. A second, all those in favor, I say aye. We are fine. Boards of Education Committee reports. Chris, do you have anything on policy or? Okay. Dawn, Orange County School Boards Association, or visitation?
No, sir. No updates from my.
Okay, Dawn, facilities?
I don't know if Patrick has any updates for us on the track and.
Nothing since the last meeting, Dawn.
Okay, so no updates on my side.
Very good. And maybe not reporting personnel, Matt?
Good evening. Respectfully requesting approval for the items listed in the personnel.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, aye. I say aye. Thank you, Donna. Business and financial, Patrick, back to you.
Thanks, John. So I am also respectfully requesting the approval of the items under the Business Financial Section of the Agenda, which include our monthly March financial reports, a donation of $50 from York Cause to North Main Elementary School, the award of contracts and bids for four bids, magazine bid, music equipment, supplies, and turf-protective flooring, which is the flooring system which would cover the track and turf field. We have a budget transfer, application of technology resources for Chromebooks, and integration of artificial intelligence in curriculum. And we have one contract renewal of our lease agreement with the Village of Harriman, rental of the Harriman Center for another year.
Very good. Do we have any questions on that? Or do we have a motion? We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, I say aye. Donna? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the committee on special education and preschool, special education items 17, 1, 2, 3, and 4? Motion, we have a second. All those in favor, I say aye. We're fine, thank you. Does anyone have a report? This is reports by Board and Central Office. Does anybody have a report to give?
No.
All right, there being no reports. Do I have a motion to adjourn the May 18 regular meeting of the Board of Education? I have a second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, I say aye. We set?
We're good.
We're good.
Happy birthday.